All right, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the St. Lucy County Planning and Zoning Commission Thursday, February 17th. Everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions for a successful meeting. Please help us to accomplish your goals while displaying your character. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Binner. Mr. Sanders. Mr. Slay. Mr. Lowndes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt. Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Here, ma'am. I just want to make sure the record's there that I think Mr. Slay is the only one with an excused absence. I'm not sure where everybody else is.
I didn't hear my name called.
Is there? Oh, you have Commissioner Slack on there?
I apologize.
No problem.
Are you here?
Ms. Slack? I am here.
Okay.
Mr. Bridgers.
Oh, missed two, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I don't have any announcements or disclosures, so we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, the minutes from the January 20th meeting.
Motion approved.
Have the motions there, second?
Second.
Second to make Commissioner Odell. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have one item on the agenda today. We have no, well, I guess we need to move to, if there's anybody wishing to address the board on any non-agenda items or public comment, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. And we'll move on to item number 10, workshops. And I do want to quickly say, I guess, welcome or welcome back to Maite Santa Maria, our new Planning and Development Services Director. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. And I guess I'll move to you guys for the workshops. Basically, how this is going to work, we've got a presentation and then we'll do probably a brief board discussion and then open it up to the audience if anybody has anything to say about it. There's quite a few of you, so I think we'll limit comments to three minutes, but you know, this is kind of an informal workshop, so don't get too upset about that if you go over a little. Maite, take it over.
Thank you. Commissioners, Maite Santa Maria, Planning and Development Services Director. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding accessory dwelling units. This is about separate individual housing units on a parcel that already has an existing home, not about individual tiny homes on just the lot without a second primary home. And this is all stemmed from a comprehensive plan policy within our comp plan. It is Policy 1.1.1.5, where it states that St. Lucy County shall review its land use designations, zoning districts, and consider the creation of appropriate standards for the permitting of accessory dwelling units in single-family residential or agricultural zoning districts while maintaining the single-family character of the primary single-family dwelling unit and that neighborhood. And for the purposes of this discussion, an accessory dwelling unit shall mean an ancillary or secondary living unit that has a separate kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area existing either within the same structure or on the same lot as the primary dwelling unit. This is also provided in statute. There's been a statute adopted by the Florida Legislature since 2004, where it provides for accessory dwelling units to encourage additional rental units for affordable housing that meet the Affordable Housing Income categories. Within that statute, which is specifically Section 163.31771 Florida statute, a local government may adopt an ordinance to facilitate accessory dwelling units, but that statute includes that the building permit for the issuance of that unit include an affidavit that specifies the unit would be rented at an affordable rate. That is not a requirement, but that is some guidance in statute. So tonight, again, this is about gathering public input, seeing the level of interest, trying to determine if this is something that can or will move forward. And to help us this evening, we have Ms. Leslie Olson, who formerly worked within this department, who's going to provide a brief presentation to help facilitate the discussion, outline some of the questions that we have that we'd like to get input from the public.
Okay. Welcome, private citizen Leslie Olson. I think we remember you.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. It's really good to see everyone this evening, and thank you for allowing me to come back and kind of wrap up some work that the county had been doing before I left. We had presented this idea of accessory dwelling units at the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that the county holds, and that committee was interested in seeing a larger conversation take place, as well as some of our commissioners. And so this was something that we had been kind of stewing on for a couple of years as this, as interest in this concept has grown. I think it has only grown more since COVID, when people have been working more out of their homes, when they have been trying to figure out how to have more happen on their property, and especially as I think the impacts of COVID have impacted affordable housing. What we have seen, I think, in our community quite a bit is that the effect of COVID, of people being able to move wherever they'd like, has impacted our local real estate economy. So if you can, if you can work in New York City and live by the beach, that really changes the way your real estate works. It really changes pricing structures, and we're definitely seeing that as a result of COVID. And so it's a good conversation to have. And what I think we see is that when it comes to accessory dwelling units, or tiny homes as people call them, but that's kind of a different thing, and so we'll talk a little bit about that as Maite did, is people either love the idea or they hate the idea. And we'll probably hear a little bit more about that tonight. And so, and all of those perspectives are good ones. And I don't think anybody up here, me, or anybody on staff, has a perspective that you have to do it this way, or this is the best idea ever. There are downsides to doing it, and there are upsides to doing it. And sometimes the idea is a great one, and you can address those issues that come with it with regulations. And that's what this team does, is they say, is this use a good idea? And if so, what are the fences we need to put on this to keep it from being a bad idea? So what is an accessory dwelling unit? An accessory dwelling unit is exactly that. It is accessory. It is not the primary dwelling unit on a lot. If you want to build a tiny home on a regular lot, you can do that today. There's no regulation that stops you from doing that. There are some building code regulations that require a certain size for rooms, so it does have to meet those requirements, but that's not a local regulation, that is a state regulation. So you can do a tiny home anywhere, but what you can't do is you can't build a tiny home with a separate kitchen in your backyard in St. Lucy County. There are some exceptions. You can build a guest house in certain zoning districts, such as our agricultural zoning districts, but there is actually a provision in the code that says it may not be rented, and you must sign something, an affidavit, at the time of building permit that says you will not rent it. I believe on Indian River Drive, you can also have a guest home. I believe that is the same. Thank you, Ben. So that is what an accessory dwelling unit is. It's a unit accessory to the primary dwelling on the lot. So why would we consider this, and what are the benefits? So some of the benefits include the issues that people have with extended family. Sometimes you need to take care of an aging parent. Sometimes you have a child who comes home from college. And in both cases, those folks probably would like a little bit more independence than living in the home with the family, and the family would probably like a little bit of independence as well. It provides an option to families who need that flexibility. In addition, the American Association for Retired Persons, AARP, and the Florida Housing Coalition has recommended that local jurisdictions consider accessory dwelling units where a homeowner builds a backyard cottage with the kitchen in their backyard or associated with it. We're going to get to a slide about that. In order to provide housing that is affordable to both people who are aging in place in the community and don't need a large space anymore, it could be for those kids coming home from college who aren't necessarily family members. And so they are recommending that this be a tool in the toolbox for both homeowners and for the community to create additional housing that is affordable to people who need small spaces. So what are the downsides? The downsides can be many. The downsides can be, do you have enough parking on your lot to handle whatever happens in this tiny home? Do you have, will there be issues when you sell your parcel? So you'd have to have a, say you had to, the regulations said you had to have a single-family home on the parcel in order to build this accessory dwelling unit, and it had to be homesteaded, so that the homeowner lives there and oversees that accessory dwelling unit? Because that is, that's one of those fences, that's one of those safeguards you can put on there. But how do you deal with it when it transfers ownership? What happens if you have noise issues? What happens if you end up, what if it has a septic system? Is it going to be sized appropriately? There are a lot of issues to work through. So part of what we're talking about tonight is, does this community and does this Planning and Zoning Commission think that the idea in general, the germ of the idea, is a good one? And if so, what are those safeguards? What are those regulations that you would put in place to make sure that it remains a good idea and avoids those negative externalities that could arise? So what is an accessory dwelling unit? As Maite said, it is an independent dwelling co-located on a single-family lot with an existing single-family home, and it can be detached, attached, or within the primary It's not a new idea. We've seen these, probably all of us have seen these in the past. They tend to happen quite a bit in either large estate areas or in urban areas where you would have a garage apartment, a carriage house apartment, a caretaker's cottage. These are things that have been around for years. Zoning laws, as they have been adopted, especially single-family zoning, has made those non-conforming uses for the most part. So this next slide shows the different ways that you can have an accessory dwelling unit. So on the upper left, that shows an attached accessory dwelling unit. It's over the garage, attached to the house, and it would have its own independent exit from the house. I'm guessing it's probably a staircase on the back of the house there. You just can't see it. Then you have the next one over, the detached tiny house, the backyard cottage. I want to make one more clarification. A tiny house is something that is built to the Florida Building Code. And so there are a lot of shows about tiny homes on wheels. That's not what we're talking about tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that really quickly. The third one down shows an attached ADU on a single-story structure. It's exactly the same concept as the two-story. And the last one is the same thing. It's an attached single-family, or it's an attached accessory dwelling unit on a single-family structure.
Are tiny homes defined as less than 500 square feet, or 500 square feet or less?
No. We don't have, well, somebody may define them as that. The county does not have a definition of a tiny home.
Okay. Does the state?
I don't know. Maite, you are the all-knowing when it comes to statute.
There is no size definition in statute. Some agencies have recommended sizes, but typically it just means that it's subordinate in size to the primary dwelling unit. So it might be 10 feet less, it might be, you know, 1,000 square feet less. It doesn't matter.
Chair Taylor, if I may. Corey Benton for the record, Assistant Planning Manager. Within the county's Land Development Code, specifically the towns, villages, and countryside overlay, we do have some provisions for an accessory dwelling unit, and that size range is roughly 625 square feet to 1,250 square feet, simply for context. We have not had a TVC town or village developed to implement those types of accessory dwelling units, but the code provisions are there for a subset of our county.
Right.
Thank you, Corey.
Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Could I ask one question quick? Taking these four ideas that pose, or showing here what they are, how will the property be taxed? If this guy does it up above his garage, if he puts it in the back, if he puts it on the side, will it just be appraised higher then? Will there be separate tax for this? And will there be, if they're going to rent it out, will they have to pay tax then for rental?
So I don't know exactly all the answers there, but if it's a single lot, the property appraiser would make a determination on, is it considered a duplex? Is it considered multifamily? And they have their own coding for how those, how that would be implemented in terms of taxing. For rental, there is a tax out there that if you rent your home for six months or more, you would have to pay that tax.
So if he, if a guy put his uncle in there, and they just let him stay, could he just build this and put his uncle in there and stay there? And he didn't pay any rent then, there's nothing to collect. But if he rented to somebody else, he'd have to pay the tourist tax?
I believe so.
Mr. Chair.
Then would the property then be appraised different also?
So we can't speak for the property appraisers' office. We would have to go back and follow up with them, because they code properties based on their use and their classification from the Department of Revenue, and we're not privy to all that information.
He'd have to go through a planning process to begin with to build this.
So it depends on the process. So there is no draft ordinance today, and there's no code today, but we're trying to establish if this is something we move forward. One of the parameters may be, is this something that's permitted as of right, where you just get a building permit and move on and develop it? Or do you want a more substantial process to review it, where you'd have to go through a planning process like conditional use to get the approval? We're not at that stage now, but we'd like to have that discussion of which one would be the preference of the community.
Right. Ms. Olson mentioned that it had to have a kitchen in it. What about a bathroom?
Definitely. So it's an independent housing unit, so it needs to have a kitchen and a bathroom.
Would he be able to tie into a septic system?
So that'll be one of the parameters as well. Somebody might need to get a resized septic system.
Okay. Thanks.
All good questions.
One more question?
Okay, yes. Well, Mr. Lowe's said, kind of leads to another question. How would that affect your homestead exemption?
So I believe if you're still the primary occupant of your home, it should not affect your homestead exemption. But again, that is a property appraisers' question, so we can follow up with them.
Okay, that would kind of lead to another scenario. Let's say that, and I've seen this happen in other cases, let's just say that my wife and I had an empty nest, and we decided that with our ADU that we would move in there and rent our home. You could have situations like that, too, then that would affect our homestead. So I was just wondering if it worked the opposite way.
We'll have to look into that, but potentially you could even do your homestead on the small unit and then have the larger unit as your rental.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry to derail us there.
Oh, no, these are all good questions. I'm writing it all down. Okay, so you have started asking some of the questions. These questions that we have up on the PowerPoint screen, we have two slides of them, and they're also in the staff report before you. These questions are meant to kick us off, you know, to think about what the issues might be. We're really interested in hearing from the Planning and Zoning Commission and from the members of the public, which is why the staff has created a written form so that you can, as we're going through this, members of the public, you guys can fill out that on ideas, what you like, what you don't like. We want to hear all of it, and three minutes doesn't necessarily give you what you need in order to do that. We might have run out, did we? No? We're good? Okay.
And just one moment on that as well. I also put my email at the very bottom of the page, so if you do not have an opportunity to provide all your comments tonight, please feel free to email us your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't a one-and-done night.
It's not. No, this is not something where, you know, the staff came up with this crazy idea, and here's the ordinance, and please approve and send it to the commission. That's not the idea here. This is really to gain some more information. Okay, so the first, I'm going to run through these questions, and then we're going to kind of toggle back and forth through these slides as you have questions, as we need to reference them. So we came up with 10 to start with. Where are the accessory dwelling units appropriate? And by that, we mean, in what zoning districts would these be appropriate? Should they be allowed in commercial zoning districts? Should they be allowed in multifamily zoning districts or just single-family? Some single-family zoning districts and not others? Those are the kinds of questions that we have. By what process should they be considered for approval? So that question, Mr. Lowe, that you asked is a good one. Is it by right? Do you just bring in a building permit? And if it meets all the requirements of the code, they sign off and you're good to go? Or is it one of those things where it requires a more substantial public review, where you post the property and you advertise and you send out notices to people within 500 feet, and they come before you for a public hearing? And then they come to the Board of County Commissioners for a public hearing? There are two options there. You can have a very public process, or it can just be a building permit process. If you have substantial regulations that address most of those externalities, maybe you don't need the public process. But that's a good question that would need to be answered. How many accessory dwelling units could you have on a lot? So one of the wonderful things about social media is that people start talking about stuff when the county sends out notices. And the staff created a survey and sent out the survey and had the media department push it out on social media. So that really started some conversation. And one of the things that I noticed people talking about was, you know, all these tiny homes shoved on a lot. Like, that's one of the ideas that could happen here. And that is not what anybody that I've talked to has conceptualized. It would be one accessory dwelling unit with an owner-occupied, single-family home. But that's really great, seeing what people are thinking it might be. How large can an accessory dwelling unit be? So you're going to want to establish a cap of, it can't be any more than this, probably. And then it could be self-limited by the size of the lot, the zoning district it's in, and the fact that it must be accessory to or smaller than the primary structure. For instance, Corey did some really quick back-of-envelope analysis that shows two similar lots of similar sizes. The largest accessory dwelling unit on one is going to be limited by the configuration of the lot and the set packs required for that lot, and the maximum lot coverage, and how much the existing primary structure is already taking up. So some of your existing zoning requirements would limit the size of an accessory dwelling unit, given the size of a lot and the size of the structure that's already on the lot. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Then they'll maybe be before the Board of Adjustment. If it don't fit, that's the next move.
That is a possibility, and so that might be something that would be, that could be contemplated in an ordinance that might allow an accessory dwelling unit, is can you go for variances on all these things? So variance for setback, a variance for height, a variance for lot coverage? Because variances are alterations on a lot-by-lot basis to the dimensional standards of the code: height, setbacks, lot coverage, those types of things.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Olson, you're open for questions and comments?
Anytime.
Wow. I've gone through a lot of this, put some thought into it, but I think one of the major restrictions would be the sanitation, the septic systems, excuse me, that we have in the county. We're all kind of becoming more aware of problems that we are facing with septic tanks. I can visualize a lot having enough land to put a small unit on, but not having enough land to add to a septic system because of the amount of drain field and such have you that would be needed. And I think someplace in our health department rules, if you add to a septic system, you have to redo the entire field and such have you? And we end up with Indian mounds out there.
Yeah, I think that it's a great question, the septic issue. I think there, too, you would be constrained by the size of your lot, the configuration of your lot, what the health department would approve. If it is contemplated in this, you know, future ordinance, that you could have an accessory have an accessory dwelling unit if you were on septic, because you could limit that. You could say, if you're on septic, no. If you do, the health department would have to certify the septic system for the new load. And so that might mean a new septic system. It might be an upgraded septic system.
I think the septic issue would be a limiting factor in, in relation to the size of the lot and what zoning area you're in right now. If you're in a agriculture 2.5, you obviously would have enough room to put in additional septic systems. But if you are anything less than that, I think the septic system is going to be a limiting factor. I think that if you are on somebody's, whether it's the county, or PSL, or whoever's potable water and sewer system, it adds a different aspect to that.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Munt.
Good evening, Ms. Olson. I apologize for not being there for your opening statement. This evening, are you with the planning department, or are you representing an outside agency? Just for clarification.
I am, I am Leslie Olson of 1001 South Eighth Street. And I just happen to be a planner, and I'm doing some pro bono work for my old friends at the county. They have not hired me. I'm just doing this for fun.
The county is not going to be hired, or have you hired as a consultant tonight?
She was just in the audience, and then she came up.
It's something I had been working on prior to, to leaving, and I wanted to see it through, and so I just offered to do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Not that they'll color my questions or thoughts one way or the other, but thank you for being here. Who brought this proposal or thoughts of expanding this to the planning department?
You know, it's been kicking around for a while. So we've had a number of people get stopped at permitting when they want to create an accessory dwelling unit on their home, on their lot for, you know, a granny flat, or aging parents, or whatever. And I've definitely had inquiries from elected officials, can we, could we get this done?
So it was internally generated?
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely not, it's definitely not an application.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are the surrounding counties doing in the same vein, if you will? Martin, Indian River, Okeechobee?
They basically allow what we allow right now, which is a guest house on a large lot, but you can't rent it.
Guest houses, but no rentals. Okay. Limitations on the size of the guest houses? And they're, are they, do they have to be detached? You're only going ADUs with a number of configurations. Do theirs have to be a detached unit?
I don't recall that in the regulations when I was reading them. I don't recall that they had to be detached, but if it's attached, they would probably, they would probably be limited to no kitchens, because that's generally what is, what is the trigger point for, is it a separate dwelling, is if it has a kitchen?
I guess my question is, would St. Lucie County be a stickout from the surrounding counties in our regulations?
Yes, sir. There are other municipalities and counties in the state of Florida that are adopting these.
Are they adjacent?
They are not adjacent.
Not adjacent. Okay. Could this become a conditional use?
Yes.
And thereby you have input from the neighbors?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. It's a good question, and I think an important one to work through.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Lowe has a question here.
When I, my, if you, I, when I got this in the, in my mail, what we were going to do tonight, I tried to research it myself. I found Sarasota is one county that's doing this, or trying to do it. Are there any other counties you've spoken with?
I have not personally spoken with any other counties. I am familiar with the city of Key West that has adopted this. I believe there are some communities in Orange County, and as well as possibly Pinellas or Hillsborough, but I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to them.
Has anybody else in the county spoken with anybody that is doing this, that we could get some information on, or report on what they're, how they're moving along with it, or their conditions that they put in so these people could get in or, and get this done?
We have not, but that's only because this is the very early stage. So we're just in the information gathering portion. If there is interest in moving ahead with this concept, that is the work that we will be doing. We will be researching other ordinances, how have other communities implemented it? We'd probably make a matrix of these communities use this, this community uses that, so that when it comes back before you in an ordinance draft, we would have all that information available.
And I appreciate that we're just, this is the beginning stage.
Yes, sir. And Chair, if you don't mind, since Mr. Munt was a little bit late today, I just wanted to reiterate that there is a policy within our existing comprehensive plan that we adopted in 2018 that actually directs St. Lucie County to look at our codes, to see if we want to develop a code provision for accessory dwelling units, since you were asking about the genesis of this.
Thank you. And I, in the agenda packet, there is a, a breakdown from the Florida Housing Association that, that details what, where other counties are in the process, because I think there's several that are coming forward with similar ordinances. I think this is a good opportunity for us to be a leader on something instead of looking to the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lowe.
I've been on this committee long enough to, way too long. One of the things that this county is very noted for, this county leads. We don't follow. We lead. Sometimes we trip and stumble and stub our toes, but we go back and fix it. And I think it's very good that we are looking at this. And I think you, you, not opening Pandora's box, but I think you are looking at it with open eyes, knowing that there's going to be problems, knowing that there's going to be some issues. We've talked about a few of them here already. I think another issue, Ms. Olson, would be, how does it affect homeowner associations? Does the county take precedence over some of those issues? If you don't have a, a opportunity to have a public discussion on each one of these, I think that would impact a homeowners' association review.
I can speak to, I think I can speak to that right now fairly, fairly well. The county regulations are here, right? And those are the things you can do. And then your deed restrictions and your HOAs are here. So just because you can do it here, you can be further limited by your HOA. So just because you're allowed to do it in the county, doesn't mean that your HOA is going to allow it.
I think, I think it needs to have a flag placed beside it. There's going to be homeowner associations that may or may not allow it, depending on the age of the people in that homeowner's association.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
One more. Commissioner Slack.
So I like that St. Lucie County is a leader on some of these issues, because sea level rise is going to drive literally millions of people northward as it increases. And there has to be a place for people to go. And by allowing this possibility, we're allowing these more flexible spaces that are rentable. We're also allowing for increased density, even in fully built-out places. So the ability to accommodate more people, but in a way that they're welcome in the neighborhood, because there's already a structure in place for that. At the same time, we have to be concerned about health issues and life safety issues. For example, if there's a fire, how does the fire department know which dwelling unit to address? Speaking of which, there goes the fire department. So is there an enunciator system required? Some way of identifying? Are fire sprinklers going to be required if there's an ADU? Is there a way to communicate that need so that a fire can be put out in a timely enough fashion to save the people that are farther away from the street potentially? Is, is fire department access required? Do we have to have a driveway that goes back to this dwelling unit? In addition to things like sanitation, and whether we add to a septic system or don't, whether we require, you know, some really, some forethought on the part of the county or any of the other jurisdictions in our area to provide sewer, and to be, you know, looking to move in that direction faster than we perhaps were planning to, so that we can accommodate this increased density and these additional residents without impacting our environment and our impaired waterways? So there, these are, there are a lot of, a lot of things that we'll have to think through that I'd be happy to address at length. You know, if we want to do a workshop, you know, within the planning department as well, you know, so that we can, can address some of the finer details.
Thank you. Number five. Can an accessory dwelling unit be an RV or a tiny home on wheels? And I already kind of gave away that. There's no one that I've talked to who thinks that that's a good idea. So, and none of my research has shown that that's something you should do. Florida, especially because of our hurricane-prone region, you want something built to the Florida Building Code in, in people's backyards. So that's not something that I would recommend as a planner, and it's definitely something we can hear from you, hear from the public about, but that's not a recommendation. How much parking would be required for an accessory dwelling unit? It's definitely going to be smaller, right? But maybe, maybe it might be based on how large the actual accessory dwelling unit is. Is if there's a cap on it that makes it very difficult for more than one or maybe two people to live in it, maybe it's a straight-up one extra parking space. If there's, if it could be the size that you would, you know, it could definitely accommodate two people, maybe there's a size threshold at which it would, you'd be required to have two. These are, these are good questions, interesting to talk through. Could it be sold separately? Essentially, could you plat it or condo it? And I think that you want to, you want to be careful with that. But if you've got a really large lot, say you've got 10 acres out west of town on an Ag 5 lot that only requires five acres per lot, and it's, and you, and the primary and the accessory have been built in such a way that you could plat it, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to, but it's an interesting question.
You've got to have 60 feet frontage, or Mr. Benton won't allow it.
That's right. You've got to meet the requirements of the code. Should the maximum density apply to accessory dwelling units? As Ms. Slack indicated, what is being recommended by the Florida Housing Coalition and the American Association for Retired Persons is that even if, if a community is built out to maximum density, that it be allowed in order to increase the availability of affordable housing and the ability to care for family members, and to allow for aging in place in communities. But it's a good question. What do we want to do there? If everybody did this, how much would that increase traffic? You know, there, there are things that we need to think about. Should impact fees apply? Impact fees are based on the amount of impact that use has on infrastructure. And so if you have a very small structure, it's probably not going to create the amount of traffic that a regular, single-family home does. So, so should it pay a full, single-family home impact fee? I don't know. I don't, I don't necessarily see the nexus there. Should it pay some? Maybe, because it does have that impact. But Florida statute does allow for affordable housing, for impact fees to be waived on affordable housing. There are issues there, too, because what if you rent it out as an Airbnb? Then you're, you're creating all kinds of impact. So that's another question. That's another drawback to accessory dwelling units, potentially, is that you could say it can't be rented out as an Airbnb, but maybe not, because there are some statutory preemptions on that as well. I don't know. I would defer to the statutory expert on the far side of the table. Let's see. Infrastructure, utilities, septic systems. You guys have already brought those up. So that is, those are the starter questions for this, for this group. And as Mr. Taylor mentioned, I believe you'll, you'd like to do some back and forth now and then have the public come up?
I think so.
Shall I stay here for the moment?
One quick question. What about accessory uses for a, a home like this? Could a guy have a business in it?
So statute recently changed to allow businesses to be in homes. It's a good question. I'd like to, I don't know.
There is a statutory provision that, it just passed this last year, that allows home-based business, and it has very limited, limited parameters of what can be allowed. And you can no longer sort of regulate certain businesses. Before, you had certain parking standards and the number of, of employees that could come. All of that has been negated by statute, and it's preempted by the state. So it'd be pretty liberal of somebody having a business from their home.
So a guy could rent this place out, I understand, on his property? Another guy could open up the business and have traffic going in and out on that, on his property?
That could be the case even with a single-family home today. The way the statute has changed, it has made the ability to run a home-based business very broad. So you could have those impacts regardless of the accessory dwelling unit.
I, I just think that, in my opinion, that the neighbors might have a problem with that. I could see in your house, maybe they don't see it, there's a, everybody parks, then all of a sudden people are coming in, they selling Coke machines, or whatever you're selling, you know, and he's doing.
I think that would be difficult for us to regulate. It would probably take a legislative change to say this doesn't apply in this area, but until the legislation changes, we are preempted on the home-based business issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Munt. I, I think Mr. Lowe's point is that you could have a home-based business in the single-family dwelling, and you could have a business in the ADU as well. And now you've got twice the traffic.
Oh, I understand.
Coming, coming in. I mean, that, that, I believe is the potential he's pointing towards.
And possibly with an accessory dwelling unit, you could consider requiring a deed restriction, that it's only for single-family occupancy. You could even put a certain income, like, you know, meeting 110% or less of the median income. Maybe that would help restrict it, because you have a legally recorded document that says these are the allowed uses. But we'd have to look at that for the home-based business legislation.
Mr. Chair. What I'm finding interesting on the density issue is that just recently, the Board of County Commissioners turned back consideration for additional floors to be built out on the barrier islands, which would increase the density by allowing the additional height. And so the direction, I think, the BOCC in that particular case is, they didn't want the additional density to occur. Along the same lines, we just recently increased the acreage that you had out in the rural area in order to permit, was it two and a half units per five? And we went to 15 acres to reduce density out in the rural area, you know, you had to have more property to put the same number of units. So again, the county is pulling back on increased density in two situations. I guess my other question is, are you at some point in the near future going to an informal?
That is the plan, but again, we're just at the very initial stages of, of collecting data.
Approximately, what would be your goal if you were going to try to get to informal?
We don't have a date right now.
Nothing?
Depends on how tonight goes.
Yes.
Chair Taylor, if I may, Commissioner Munt, the two topics brought up, the informal discussion of height definition and height allowance on North and South Hutchinson Island. It was independent of It was independent of density. For instance, the comprehensive plan establishes density for properties on, on North and South Hutchinson Island, as it does the, across the county, and the contemplation was the vertical height. Now, I understand that if you allow increase in height, maybe folks can, designers can fit the maximum units within the project, but the contemplation was, was not related to density itself. And the rural subdivision concept, which has been tabled indefinitely by the Planning and Zoning Commission, what that explored was a trade-off, potential carrot-and-stick scenario where if someone wanted to propose a subdivision out west for a hobby farm or larger estate agricultural parcels, they could concede density in favor of waiving certain requirements such as paved streets, sidewalks, landscaping. So, it wasn't necessarily a negation of density or an increase in standards unless someone was proposing to waive certain requirements for their project. So, both topics, to an extent, have correlation with density, but there have not been any formal actions by the county to lower or restrict density of late.
In the, excuse me, in the case of the island, I've seen the drawings from the developer's proposal, and, you know, at 35 feet, you could put three floors, but they proposed five floors. And so, instead of 30 units, you've got 55 units. That's more density. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, I've got a few questions. The, in our current zoning districts that allow single-family homes, what's, what's the smallest lot size that we have in, in those districts?
Chair Taylor, for the most part, it's 8,000 square feet, and that would require central water to serve those lot types.
Okay, so too small for a septic tank?
And for context, if, if we took 8,000 divided by 43,560 square feet, it's just roughly .184 acres, so under a quarter acre.
Thank you. I mean, just my opinion, but I think, I mean, reading through some of the other, the regulations in the, in the report from Housing Authority, which was slightly propaganda-esque, if, if you want my opinion, but they, I mean, they're all for, you know, no regulations, just do whatever you want, which I mean, part of me is totally okay with that. I think, based on square footage of the lot, I think, you know, I'd like to see no more than 1,200 square foot of a, an accessory dwelling unit, in my opinion, and obviously with the septic tank. But I have no problem with larger agricultural lots allowing, I wouldn't say any more than two, because then we've got, you know, we're just building another neighborhood. But based on, you know, over, you know, if you've got more than two acres, you can do two ADUs on that, on that parcel, in my opinion. Because that will allow, like you said, being able to subplat the, the lots, and I believe they have to be, they'd have to be separated by a certain amount in order to be subplotted, right? Like the dwellings themselves?
Yes, Chair Taylor, when considering any lot splits or subdivision, if there are two structures, occasionally out west, we'll, we'll have a primary residence today and a guest house. They are proposing to subdivide. We have to, to adhere to all setbacks. The survey would verify that prior to legally separating the property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. I'm not done yet, Mr. Lowes. What's the parking requirement for a, a regular, single-family home currently?
Two spaces.
Two? Is that across the board, or is that based on number of bedrooms or square footage? Nothing? Okay. I think for that, I, I'd like to see, because I, I would think the majority of single-family homes, at least that I can think of, have a four, four-spot driveway. You know, you've got a two-lane driveway, there's usually a two-car garage, you know, 90% of the time, and they've got four spots. So, I, I wouldn't like to see a homeowner wanting to put an ADU and having to pave, add another parking lot, a parking spot. I think if they can use what they've got, if they have more than the two required in their single-family home, then they, they've met the parking requirement, as far as I'm The, do we currently have, I mean, does the state or anybody have limits? You know, if you have three-bed, a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house, does the state regulate how many people you can have living in that house?
Not to my knowledge.
No? So, I could have as many as I want in there?
If there, there is a limitation on unrelated persons in the same house, but it's, it's a fairly high number, I think it's six.
Six, six.
And that's a local regulation, that's not a state.
That's local?
It's in our land development code.
Okay.
Definition of family.
Okay, so there's, okay, I'm, I'm trying to think, like, the, the density situation where, like, Commissioner Odell's situation, and we've got two people in the main house, and we add two in the guest house, you know, that's, we're not increasing density, that's, that's just, you know, the house is already built for more than two people already, we're just adding two more. But if we have a situation where we've got, you know, six people in the main house, and then we're adding four in the back house, that's, and we're on a, a smaller lot, and that's, that's a pretty intense density, I would think, in terms of the, the infrastructure, utilities, and parking, and, so I don't know what the answer is to that. I think the, the guidebook said it's usually 500 square foot per person, and I don't know if we're able to put regulations on that, but that's why I think 1,200 square foot, roughly for two people, seems reasonable. The impact fees, I think I like what Hillsborough County has, a flat $100 fee for any impact instead of a percentage base, because it's really not adding that much impact to, you know, existing infrastructure, at least in most cases, I would think. So, I, I think having the, a flat fee would be better than anything else, or I'm okay with nothing, but, I'm trying to think. The, I don't think we have anybody, as the fire district hasn't looked at any of this yet at this point, but I, to Commissioner Slack's point, I'm wondering how the fire district handles a regular guest house. Like, if you've got a guest house in the back, how does the fire district handle those types of calls now? And I think that whatever, however they do that, that's what they should do with these, And then I, I think I brought up the long-term rentals, we'd have to do, the post office would have to do some sort of address thing, I would think, you know, using one mailbox for two houses. Uh, I don't know, those are just some of my notes, I don't know if any of that makes sense, but.
No, that's great, thank you.
Just where I'm at right now. Mr. Slack?
Just as a, a point of comparison, I lived in Los Angeles for a couple of years at one point, early in my life, and in some of the beach towns there, things had grown denser and denser, and they found themselves going from the situation where you have ADUs to a situation where you have that formerly single-family lot being split into two lots with a cross-access agreement and one house behind the other. And while I don't, I don't sense that that's where we're headed anytime in the near future, I bring it up because the code is a living and changing thing, and so what we need to write for right now is the needs for what we see in the foreseeable future, but recognize that some of these things that we can envision or see in other places could come to pass as things evolve over a longer period of time.
Mr. Lowes?
You mentioned that you have talked to Monroe County, Key West, to see if they're doing anything?
So, I am familiar with the city of Key West. I'm actually, I just moved up and formerly worked for Monroe County. Key West has had an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, I'm going to guess, 10, 15 years. They allow one accessory dwelling unit. It's a built-out municipality. They have a hard time addressing affordable housing, so they do allow one, I believe it's a max size of 600 square feet. They do require a deed restriction and an income limitation for the occupants, and there has to be a primary home that's owner-occupied as well. It has served as affordable housing in that jurisdiction, but they have also had some compliance issues where the units are used as short-term rentals, and they cause a lot of noise and traffic complaints because it's people using it more as a hotel room versus a single-family home. But that is also a very tourist destination site, so.
Sure, and Monroe County's pretty well-built out.
The city of Key West is, definitely.
Yeah. Would, would you consider talking with Pine Ellis County? They are also built out, and in order to build a new house in Pine Ellis County, you've got to buy a house and tear it down.
Absolutely.
And I think they have a similar type of issue, if you would check and see what their solutions have been.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mont? The chairman brought up the question of impact fees and, and a flat fee to get a permit to build one of these, is that what you? I think the fire district and the school district have some problems with that. If the potential is there for an increased number of people in density, but the number of structures have been increased, and you do have the potential of renters who might have children coming in, and it's unfortunate we don't have Mr. Sanders here tonight, who's our expert on the school system and impact fees, but I think they would want some significant fees.
Of course they would.
To have these built. So, as you get additional information, bring those agencies in for their input, obviously.
Well, I could tell you what they'd say right now.
And, the reason I bring it up is, we are going to be examining impact fees in St. Lucie County very shortly. And construction fees, I mean, we're looking at infrastructure, infrastructure that we would have built a year or two years ago, cost has probably gone up 35% or 40%. And, you know, people's eyes are popping when the county comes in and said, "We'd like to put sewers in," but they hear the numbers today of what it was going to cost versus the original thought about doing it two years ago. There's some staggering numbers out there.
You might want to call, I spoke to Sarasota, Sarasota's doing this, too, and you might want to call them.
We will definitely touch base with them.
Get some ideas, help us.
Get them on the phone.
Thank you.
Look at my, I thought I had some other notes.
Chair Taylor?
Yes?
We're talking about impacts and impact fees and things like that. Perhaps a consideration by a, per bedroom, in the same way that the health department looks at septic systems. Perhaps that might be a consideration for the determinant of the impact fees, because that would certainly give it, give a gauge of how many occupants there might potentially be. You know, you could have an enormous open space that's a studio, you're not going to have a family of six living in that.
Right.
On other impacts, when we start covering the lot more, we have more stormwater issues, and we need to carefully determine what alternatives there might be. We might consider that an ADU has to capture and collect its rainwater for reuse in the landscape, for example. You know, it hopefully would keep the footprint of the building down and also keep down the impacts to our stormwater system. One other thing I was considering was, would you need to meter these separately, and how would this impact the power grid? And would we have some sort of requirement for photovoltaics, for example, some way to offset that additional energy usage, so that we do not continue to burden the, the grid that we have now and require further extensive renovations to that grid with all of these additional people?
So, maybe some sort of tax incentives or impact fee reductions if there's green technology used in the construction, solar panels?
That could be, you know, that could be a widespread policy, not just on ADUs.
Maybe Corey, you can answer this. What is, how does the code define a kitchen? Just a mini-fridge and a hot plate?
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, I think we would dig deep into building code, because they will assess any plumbing and electrical and ventilation requirements associated with a kitchen, and we would probably utilize that as the, the framework.
Okay. I'm, I'm thinking, I was just thinking, my in-laws recently bought a house in Kentucky, and they looked at a couple up there, and there was one with, it was like 30 acres, it had a main house, and then it had two, I think, two or three cabins on the property, but they didn't have kitchens in them. So, they, I'm just wondering how they were classified up there. They had like a microwave and a mini-fridge, but that's, I wouldn't consider that as a, a kitchen.
And Chair Taylor, for context, the city of Fort Pierce, when they grant permission for guest houses, they have a limitation that does not allow a kitchen to be integrated. I believe they stop short of the, the larger power appliances, but allow, for instance, a small refrigerator and a sink, but not a dishwasher, not a range and oven, so.
Right. Okay, so really, the, I think the, the range and the oven is what increases the power supply in, in a kitchen, right? One other note I had about the, the setbacks, I think, I mean, I think it should be whatever the building code is, is now, obviously, with the, the lot line setbacks, but, but I also think there's several properties in Fort Pierce that I can think of that have an ADU on a, at a zero lot line, or like right, right on the edge of the lot. I mean, is there a way to allow at least a variance or something to allow those types of things? If, if a homeowner's limited to, but they still want to put an ADU in?
Currently, a homeowner could request a variance.
Okay.
For setbacks.
Okay.
For a shed, for whatever. I think one of the questions to be answered here in potentially drafting an ordinance is, would you, would this somehow limit the allowance for variances? Like, do you want people to be able to ask for them?
Right.
For an accessory dwelling unit? I don't even know legally if you can limit the ability to ask for a variance, but that is something that can be explored.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't think I would want to limit to be able to ask for it. I mean, every, every property's different, and every, you know, if there is that type of variance, it should be looked at on a case-by-case basis, I would think, right? Mr. Slack?
One of the things that, that we've, well, we've been primarily envisioning this accessory dwelling unit as something that gets built after the fact, next to an existing home. But another thing to consider is, what happens when a developer comes in and wants to build a new neighborhood? This would allow for a different sort of planning paradigm, something perhaps denser and more walkable with alleys as well as streets, with garages entering off alleyways, with the ADU being next to or above the garage as the garage apartment. And yes, that would mix the income levels in the neighborhood, it would potentially provide labor for a nearby shop or other workplace. So, you know, we've, we've been concerned about workforce housing and affordable housing, but when we, when we look at how, how this gets implemented in new development, I think it will allow us opportunities to build some, some really good communities that will be more equitable.
Okay.
Mr. Lowes?
I think you also have to look if it comes into a, a townhome section. Sarasota has rulings on that also, I pulled that up. What you can do if you have a townhome and you want to have an accessory building to that townhouse, it's not like having a single-family home and wanting to put an accessory building. And one of the rules that they have is that it can't, it can't be allowed in front of, in, accessory buildings should not be allowed in front setbacks, shall not exceed 10 feet in height, and shall not cover more than 50% of the yard where the townhome is on. of the yard where the townhome is on. You might want to look at that, too.
Okay. Let me see. The septic tank issued that we had talked about with the... Was the health department goes by the number of bedrooms? Is that what I was told?
That's correct, Chair Taylor.
I mean, what type of, I guess, options do we have as far as... Like, I'm just thinking of the... I'm still thinking of Mr. Odell's situation, where we have two people in the main house, probably at least a four-person septic tank, or at least usually. But they're only adding two in the backyard. That, to me, doesn't add any further burden on the septic system. So how do we... I guess, how do we get that regulated, I guess? I don't know what I'm trying to say.
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, I think the light experience our staff has encountered regarding the septic system replacement or recertification or even new units related to building additions to existing homes, the addition of a guest home and/or a situation in which someone has a platted lot of record from the 1960s, it's a very small lot, and they have to cite a well and a septic on it. The health department has various dimensional criteria, separations, even capacity considerations, as we talked about, quantity of bedrooms related to the capacity of the unit. The market has responded with newer technology, newer systems that expedite or speed up or, you know, alter the process of what a septic system is designed to accomplish. But I think there are various nuances that have to be considered in what the process would look like in the collaboration with the health department. Is it a reinspection? Is it expansion of a system? Is it, you know, a complete replacement with an improved system? Or do the regulations limit the availability of ADUs to an area that has central services? If it's not over a certain size of the property where you can co-locate or have two systems on one parcel?
Right. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Odell?
Yes. I think we definitely would need to have some type of restriction in size other than just being subordinate to the original building. It seems like an ADU would be more considered like, you know, adding on a separate bedroom or separate, you know, little extra room, which would mean you would also have to restrict the number of people, maybe one to two, which is what I would put in an additional room. The other thing, when we move to the next stage of this, would it be possible to have someone from the property appraiser's office or from one of the utilities companies to help, you know, any future questions we have, such as the electric grid? Basically, will the ADUs be sharing electric meters? Will they be sharing mailboxes, sharing a driveway? In other words, if you're just sharing everything, it's almost like an additional room to your home. The other way, addressing the fire issue, normally what you would do if you have a mother-in-law's apartment, you would be required to have like a letter A or B. Like, so if you're a 1002, it would be A and B. So that way, if you had any fire or police concerns, they would be able to address it, you know, more directly. So I think it would be helpful if the next stage, we did have someone from at least Fort Pierce Utilities or from FPNL, you know, that could help us out a little bit with the grid. Good question, you know, those questions.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Did we answer zoning districts? Do we have any discussion on what... Which types of districts we would recommend? I mean, for me, I think if you can have a single-family home, I think they should be allowed, as long as all code regulations and size requirements are met, and then allowing for any variances that are needed, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Slack?
I think allowing them in commercial zones would actually be helpful for workforce housing.
Commercial zones?
Where you have... Yeah. Where you have an apartment over the shop, that sort of situation, that more of a... Picture a street front like Second Street in downtown Fort Pierce, where you have shops downstairs, and then there are... Right now, they have offices upstairs, if there's enough stairs. But instead, you could also have a dwelling unit. And that would be a rentable space or a condo space. And that would provide eyes on the street, increase safety in downtown, have a more urban feel to either a new development or an existing town. I don't know what the...
Are those mixed-use?
What the TBC has.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Slack, members of the commission. Currently, in the county's industrial light district and commercial general district, you're afforded the opportunity to have an accessory, single-family detached unit. Believe in the commercial neighborhood district, you can have an accessory, single-family unit, but I believe it has to be attached to the structure and kind of in the rear of it. So again, we don't deal in the same urban areas as the city of Fort Pierce, which has their own provisions, but we do have an allowance.
Not yet.
Not yet. But we do have that allowance. And as you highlighted, the towns, villages, and countryside, it does have various new urbanist approaches and allows for ADUs in certain lot types, allows for vertical mixed-use, residential above, commercial.
Okay. So that wouldn't need to change? Those are already allowed in commercial neighborhood?
Yes, at least in those three.
Basically.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Mont?
If we work this again or we move forward, if you will have contacted all of the agencies who have impact fee powers and get their numbers?
Commissioner Mont, when you indicate, receive their numbers as far as what they would recommend or as far as evaluate via study of what the appropriate figure would be?
At this point, I would ask them, you know, if you built an accessory unit today, what would you expect in the way of fees to support that? The school district, they all have numbers. They can tell you what they would... Their fees would be today.
Thank you.
Chair Taylor, Mr. Mont.
Who said that?
The county's actually in a fortunate position right now, having an expert on contract to evaluate impact fees. And it would probably be a fairly simple matter to have them make a recommendation for appropriate impact fees based on what other communities have done for accessory dwelling units, if that's the interest of the group, so...
Well, my point is that if somebody wanted an ADU, they should have an idea of what they're going to encounter moving forward. I was involved a couple of years ago on getting some, was it ECUs from the water people? And that was a $38,000 surprise. And so, anyway, you can have a great idea, but you may have a budget, too.
Right. Surprises involving money are usually not fun.
Does anybody else have any discussion points from the board at this time? We'll bring it back after the public comment and see where we're at from there. All right. Leslie, you can take a break? Well, we're probably... Stay close. We might need you, but... So at this time, if anybody from the public would wish to address the board, please form a single file line if necessary, but...
Hi. My name is Brenda DeLong. I live over on St. Lucie Boulevard. And she already answered my question, but then I came up with seven things that I'm going to go through them real quick, because I know I'm out of time. First of all, at the very beginning, you said that this had to be occupied by the homeowner. That makes sense to me, because you're not looking to do businesses. The people in this county need a place to live. You know, when single moms, parents, if they're not making $40,000 a year, they can't afford to rent in this county. So I think that there should be... The homeowner should be in the home. And if you're only... You said you were going to rent out the dwelling, the secondary dwelling, as a rental, then there is no business. You're trying to get homes here, not businesses, in my opinion. Let's see. That's two. Let's see, three. Oh, some of the areas you didn't mention in the county are actually under the Port St. Lucie sewer system. So that would not affect some of those things. And you talked about like the children moving out or the parents. And it brought to mind that I have two grandchildren, 24 and 25, that are still living at home because they're not making $40,000 a year and can't afford to move out on their own. So this would be a great thing for them. So you're not going to have more people. You're just taking them from this dwelling to that dwelling. And that, in my opinion, again, would not affect the septic system. Excuse my language. Screw the neighbors. You know, if you go to Martin County, they're starting out where you have to have five acres to put up a home. It's the same thing. People don't want it in their backyard. Well, I'm really sorry, but there's people living down the street, there's kids living in their cars, because those people don't want it in their backyard. So, I mean, granted, I don't think you should have a bar going down there. And again, I don't think there should be any businesses. What was my other thing? Oh, you're talking about energy. One thing that is not being done in this county or anywhere in the country, except way out west, like in Oregon and Montana, and that's energy-efficient homes. And I think you're talking about, you know, saving on the energy, then do something about it to begin with. Almost every home, I would imagine, in this county has a bigger air conditioning system than they need. I know that on the books, there is a blow-by, blow door, something test that the building department wants to be done, but nobody's paying attention to it, whether they're doing it or not. But if you would build energy-efficient homes, and not necessarily with solar. I have a friend in New York. His electric bill, heating bill, in the wintertime, he built what they called a zip house, structurally engineered panels. His heating bill went from $200 a month on a 700-square-foot house to $20 a month on a three-story 2,100-square-foot house. So I really think, you know, not just using it, you need to use our energy efficiently. What else can I say? I guess that's pretty much it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. Do you need my name and address, or?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Lasana Hayes, 168 Pirro Way, Fort Pierce.
Sorry.
No, you're done.
It's not the first time.
How do I send it over?
So needless to say, I'm all for it. Just like the other woman said, there are too many people that are out of housing since 2008 debacle. A lot of people lost their homes, they're closed on. The residual effects of that are still occurring. Companies such as Black Knight, who are on Wall Street, who used to be lender processing services, who pushed all these foreclosures through to their self-benefit, are still occurring today. And the people are having to live in the cars, Walmart parking lots, and move in with family. So when it comes to ADUs, I'm all for them. It's not enough affordable housing. I know you're worried about some of the sewer issues with the septics. Well, I hate to tell you this, but it's a non-issue as far as I'm concerned, because if I have a family member that needs a place to live, and they need to move in with me, and there's already four people in the house, no one's going to stop six more people from moving in and still using that same sewer.
Right.
Whether it's in the backyard, in a separate unit, or whether it's already on the front. So I don't mind the RVs. I know she said that she didn't think it was a great idea. They can be strapped down, just like a mobile home. There can be a requirement as such as that. People already park RVs in their backyard, and they don't move them for hurricanes as it is. I haven't seen too many fly across the yard. So, infrastructure, when you get into the utilities, if you're stuck on the same meter, this should be maybe optional there, because internet companies will not allow to have another unit, have a separate cable bill, if there's only one meter. I'm not saying you need to force them to have separate meters, but take it into consideration or have additional units, A, B, like you said. And I could be here for about a week to address all these issues. People... There's some mobile home parks that land is owned. So are those considered single-family homes? Would this be allowed in those areas? Parking issues? I have a 10,000-square-foot lot. I can tell you right now, tomorrow morning, I can get a park, motorhome in my driveway, and about eight cars. Setbacks create an issue as far as I'm concerned. The way my property is set up is there's a mobile home pushed to the back. So it's pretty close to the limit on the back lot line. So where would that allow for an ADU to occur if you're hard and fast on the variances or on the lot lines? You can give the option for variance, but I can tell you right now, I had a big property in Lake Worth, Florida, that became a big development issue. I had to sue the city of Lake Worth, the Department of Community Affairs, and the state of Florida. That was a lot of fun. Well, I find variances, nothing against you guys. Has to do with who you know and who you're friends with, and whether they like you or not, and whether they're going to let it push through. So I'm for the variances, but at the same time, I'm really not. So I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hate public speaking.
I think you dropped your pen over there on the floor.
Good evening. Jackie Clark, Mayor of the Village of Indian Town, 15516 Southwest Osceola Street. I do have Councilmember Janet Hernandez here with me, PZA Chair Vernestine Palmer, member Renita Pressler, member Milton Williams, and also member Daniel Sahai. So we're newly incorporated in 2017, so I'm more here for comments. And we're all here to listen, to see what you all have to say or what... How are you going to... This is going to evolve, because we have a housing issue as well. So we came here so our PZA board could see how it runs, since we're new, but also just to, you know, soak in and see how this all plays out. We're in the western part of Martin County. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, I'm sorry. And our development director is Ms. Athia Jefferson.
Brought everybody, all right. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Garmin. I live in Lakewood Park, Fort Walton, Fort Pierce, Florida. And really, I just have a few points. We can do a... Can we do a two-story tiny home? We can do it above a garage, so can we do a two-story tiny home behind our house? I mean, what would be the height limit? So if you had the things up here for over the garage, that'd be like a two-story. So why couldn't you build a two-story, as far as that goes? And then, as a lady mentioned out, the ones on wheels. We've got mobile home everywhere. Except if they're tied down properly, they do a good job. And, you know, the impact, people are coming. They're coming sooner than we're going to be prepared. So letting this go through and happen at the homeowners, you know, I've got a lot, and I don't have a house on that lot. So apparently, I can't put any of these tiny homes on that lot. But why couldn't I? Why couldn't I use that and put two tiny homes on? I've got a major house, my house, and I've got a lot. Put two more homes on there, that would be two more families. You know, but you've got to have a house on the lot. Now, Mars is just not deeded together, so it's deeded as a separate lot. Then the septic system, as they all say, is a burden. But there's other ways around septic. You don't have to patch into your own. You can do a big expensive one. But how about something like this bearing tank that holds so much water? And yeah, you've got to pay to get it pumped out. That would be one problem. I mean, you know, you don't have to have a leach field, you don't have to have this, be underground, cement, and contain so much, you know, fluid per unit. And then it just has to be pumped out. So let's see anything else. Nope, I think that is it. I appreciate it very much, y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Sir?
Kevin.
Hi. I'm Paul Rodriguez. I live in Golden Ponds Retirement Community. And for 35 years up in Maine, I was a home builder developer. And the concept of tiny homes... And the concept of tiny homes, to me, was always intriguing. In Maine now, they've allowed, they're allowing it to happen, uh, of course, in certain areas, not where there's half-a-million-dollar homes and that type of thing. But, uh, I think demographically, especially nowadays, it fits real well with a single widowed person like myself, or widow, uh, woman, um, God bless divorced young lady, young man. Uh, I've got two daughters here in Port St. Lucie, and they only have, only have two grandkids, and that's all they want, is one child. So, tiny homes would work very well with people coming out of, out of college with a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand a dollar, uh, you know? Student loan, you know, and that type of thing. Uh, where you could get people involved. I just foresee like a community of just tiny home communities, and I see, all this is all brand-new to me, uh, where they excavate, make ponds to, for the top, for the soil, to build up roads, and then all of a sudden, there's a beautiful pond, and I just could see, just see tiny homes around that, that pond, and there's a tiny home community. Uh, again, I just think economically, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, I just, even in, even in Maine, people are fighting over, over the homes that are priced at this amount, and they're getting more than the amount that, even in Maine, they're getting a lot more than what they were asking for. So, I just think that the tiny home is, is a great idea, a great concept, it, it works for all demographics of our society today. Uh, I, I believe anyways, uh, that, uh, done properly, uh, like you, you folks here are on a great start to doing it, and, uh, it's, uh, right now, the way the prices are, it's really a wonderful concept to be able to, to pull this thing off, you know, in some manner, because it, it's, I could work with it, you know? Uh, like I said, demographically now, you know, my dad was one of eleven, my mother was one of ten, so that would work real well for them. Uh, but, especially nowadays, a lot of people just saying, a lot of, my kids' friends said, we're not having any kids. And, you know, so for them, a tiny home, a couple would work beautifully, in a nice set-up community, you know? Uh, if that was the way, uh, this would go some way too. Uh, and then, of course, the ADU in the backyard also works nicely too, for the young person, again, from college, and a place to, uh, to get on their feet, learn how to pay household bills. But, uh, no, I think it's, uh, yes, I'm sorry.
And, and I like what you're talking about, because I think your idea is good. I mean, I thought about this a couple of years ago, just a tiny home community, with nice homes that have their own sewer system and everything, you know, and, but not a big house.
Oh, no, no, I was thinking, I think.
Because you're basic, that's what, basically, what you're talking about, you're not talking about putting it with a, next to another home, or on a, on that lot. You'd like to see a development just with tiny homes.
A neighborhood with small houses?
Yeah.
Exactly, no, exactly. I mean, this is one, one home here, one there, another one there, and this is a nice little pond, they have a little black patio, and all of a sudden, hey, they have their own home at a reasonable price, they can afford, uh, pay off the student loans, and, and then, again, like my mother-in-law, she was very, until she passed away, a little while ago, she was very spry for her age, that would've been perfect for her, you know, that type of thing, back in Maine, but anyways.
Go build it, they will come.
Who said that?
That's me.
Okay, they will come, yes. Yes, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Great idea, and if I can be of any help whatsoever, I wouldn't mind being involved in a committee, or whatever, so.
Thank you for being here.
I got time.
Paul? Sorry, Paul?
Paul? The Secretary needs you for a moment. Come on out.
Members of the Board, thank you for having me. Um, I'm Caleb, I live over in, uh, White City, on Sunrise Boulevard.
Okay. We need your address for the record, Stephanie.
Oh, uh, four-two-one-seven Sunrise Boulevard. Um, so, actually, I came here, uh, speaking to this gentleman, uh, I came here, uh, because of interest in tiny, tiny home development, I'd love to get into some real estate development, and, uh, people my age are very interested in this, uh, my demographic, um, moving towards a more minimalistic lifestyle, not needing, you know, two thousand square feet for two people to not even be there most of the day, going, going to work, et cetera. Um, and I understand that's not what this is about, uh, but to, uh, to address that, I think that is a great, uh, something to look into in the future, um, and something that I personally would be interested in, I believe other members of the community, uh, in my demographic would as well. Um, and then I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to say that, uh, I'm glad that you guys are moving in this direction. Um, I did have some thoughts on, uh, some of the, uh, some of the things that we discussed. Um, I really love the ideas, um, that Ms. Slack had mentioned, um, with, uh, a lot of the, um, environmental policy, um, I really appreciate that. Um, I also live on the water, and that's, uh, absolutely critical to the Florida environment, I feel like, um, the environment of living in Florida, rather. Um, so, uh, tax breaks and any kind of incentive for green technology, I think, is a wonderful idea. Um, and when we start looking back into, like, the ADUs, um, in allowing, um, breaks, maybe in the impact fees or the taxes, uh, for implementing that in the development, I think is a, a wonderful plan. Um, there's also, as we mentioned, uh, alternatives to septic. Composting toilets are another thing that's, uh, um, possible to put in, that would not require, uh, septic, uh, it would only require, um, a compost, an area of compost. Um, and then, uh, I think that, you know, limiting where these could be is, uh, is definitely of concern, as far as lot size, I think that it was probably mentioned, or, it was pretty clearly mentioned that setbacks and stuff are going to be a limitation, um, and will kind of set their own boundaries. Um, but, uh, from, you know, just looking at a, a size standpoint, and where that may, um, for whatever reason, some of the designations may not be limitation enough, uh, it seems fairly reasonable that something in the RS4, uh, area would probably be, um, a good, a good limitation area, that's going to be most homes. Um, and then, uh, uh, finally, the education impact fee was the only other thing I wanted to mention. Um, I think that the auxiliary dwelling unit is typically not going to be children in general, and I may, I may misunderstand what the impact fee is, um, as I'm not familiar, but, uh, typically, it's going to be elderly and, uh, people that have already gone through, uh, the public school system, so, um, that impact, impact fee towards the education part of it anyway, seems a little bit, um, unnecessary.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies, Eric Thiemann, very longtime county resident, right now I'm at thirty-eight, thirty-three, eighteen, Orange Avenue. Um, grew up in River Park, that wonderful pocket of St. Lucie County, inside of Port St. Lucie's. My family played ball with your dad, at Sports Park. Couple things, when I saw the ad on Facebook, there was a nice little street with tiny homes all lined up, and they were kind of equating ADUs with tiny homes, and I think that's kind of, you know, tiny homes is a cute little buzzword, it's kind of catching on, we like to throw it around, you know, I think this is a workshop on ADUs, it'd be cool maybe to have a workshop on tiny homes, as they were, you know, presented in that picture, and as other gentleman was talking about. So, that's something, maybe just clarify that the use of the, the terminology in tiny homes, what are tiny homes versus ADUs? Um, Mr. Bennett, what was the overlay you referred to?
Uh, Chair Taylor, uh, if I may answer the question.
Yeah.
Uh, we talked about the towns, villages, and countryside.
Oh, yes.
Uh, which is a, a future land-use district. It's also an overlay district that has particular, uh, development standards.
Like the one out on Oslo? I mean, Indrio?
It's Indrio, Indro Road, north and south, typically west of Kings.
Like the secondary urban services boundary, or area?
It has some nuances to that, but effectively, it, uh, allows you to develop, uh, as, as currently guided by the agricultural zoning districts, that are the predominates, uh, of that district, but also allow for cohesive design of new towns, new villages, countryside, uh, and essentially a master-planned community.
And that's downstairs in your department?
Yes, second floor.
The other thing, talking about the capacity of, of septic systems, you know, when they're approving a septic system, they have to have kind of some way of gauging, all right, well, how much septic system do we need here? And they've kind of used number of bedrooms as a way to arrive at that, you know, so many bedrooms, or so many butts, and so many, you know, you, you know, so many digestive systems. And, so if you have a four-bedroom home, and your kids move out, but they want to have their own, under their own roof in the backyard, well, now that's six bedrooms, and I don't think anybody's doing a census, you know, at the front door, um, so, that's kind of the system that they've come up with, so I don't know that they would.
Right.
Just allow, you know, just say, oh, okay, they're going to the backyard, but it's still four butts, we're good to go, but, unless there was some way to, unless they did a census.
Mm-hmm.
There's a thought, anyway. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Denise Allen, I live at seven-oh-two Southeast Elwood in Port St. Lucie. I've been a St. Lucie County resident for thirty-two years. And, um, I love the idea of tiny homes, or even this, you know, auxiliary unit behind your home, but I want to talk to you about tiny homes, and what I think is important right now in our country, and even especially in our state, is homelessness. We really need to address that with, um, in particular, like, single women with children. It's just not right, it's heartbreaking to see that situation with their, they're living in cars and vans and station wagons and things like that, and, uh, I think it's disgraceful to have people homeless like that, that, because they can't afford the housing. Housing and taxes and insurance has gotten, gotten so ridiculous that people are forced to sell their homes and move out of state now, because we have so many people coming into this area with money that can afford a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house. It's just not fair that it's squeezing out the middle class. And, I would suggest that if you're going to allow new housing developments to come in, that you allow a tiny home community, similar to like what he was talking about, maybe a little closer together, maybe have a neighborhood, a small neighborhood, where there's a mix of older people that are retired, or veterans, that are single, or, you know, alone in this world, instead of living in a car, that they would have a community to live in, maybe have a little community center in that little neighborhood for them, a community garden, where you have single parents with their children communing with older people, they can learn how to garden, you know, and have that nice community effect. And also, transportation, to come in, you know, to make its pass by that neighborhood, to allow people to get on a bus and not need a car, or have a bicycle, that they, you know, and have this place close enough to where there was stores and things like that, where they could walk to, or they could work at, and provide that type of opportunity to, for people, whether the, whether they own it, or, you know, maybe do something like, um, where they own it for a few years, until they're ready to move out, you know, at a certain rate, I don't know. I know Habitat for Humanity does a lot with this creative financing and things like that for people, and maybe they can, you know, help out with this situation, if given the opportunity. But, there's also other areas in this country that are doing tiny house communities, like Austin, I think, has one. Um, I didn't have a chance to really look into it, but I know it's a viable option. And as far as composting toilets go, I used one. You know, I lived off-grid, I lived on a sailboat, and our toilet, you know, we were either going to have a sink and, sink and boat, or use a composting toilet. And, um, but anyway, there are, uh, it's very clean, it's very good for the environment. And the one last thing I'd like to suggest, is when you allow these communities to come in, don't let them tear all the trees down. Be a little greener, man, I mean, we got pine trees, they're just being wiped out, oak trees, you know? If you look at Indian River County, how beautiful those trees are, these old trees are being torn down, and it just breaks my heart. Anyway, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come on, make it quick.
Well, since everybody's talking about the campers and so forth, I sold my house in Port St. Lucie here a couple of years ago, and I became a full-time RV'er in my fifth wheel, and I figured I'd travel. I traveled all the way from Port St. Lucie up to St. Lucie Boulevard. I've been in the Roadrunner RV Park now for two years. And there are a lot of families in there, because of that exact reason, that they can't afford to live in a house. But, you know, it's a great place, I mean, it's a resort, they have a pool, the kids, everybody looks out for the kids. Um, we had a young man, unfortunately, the other day, twelve-years-old, helping his father work on his car, and the car fell on his face. He ended up in intensive care. That little community, we've got like four-hundred-and-fifty in there, that community came up with thirteen thousand dollars for that family in three days.
Wow.
And there are, we're allowed to stay in that park full-time, I think, because it used to be a mobile home park, but like the new park that went in here, um, I don't know, on Jenkins, I think it is, or Jennings, or something like that, you can't stay there more than six months. So, if you could change it, so that people could stay full-time in those campers, that would take care of a lot of housing. If you go on the Nextdoor website, you'll see, every day, there's people saying, does anybody have a place I can rent? My rent went up six hundred dollars, I've got to, you know, I've got to be out. And, they can go and spend a couple thousand dollars and buy a decent camper, or like some of us, spend a hundred-and-some thousand and have a little bit nicer one, but, they'll have a place, a roof over their head, and people to take care of them.
Right. Thank you.
Chair Taylor, if I may.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, plug, the county recently developed a, uh, task force on homelessness, and they are promoting a, um, a workshop that will be held on March third at the Fenn Center, starting at six PM. So, based off of some of the public comments here tonight, I think some of the individuals here in attendance may want to, uh, join that workshop, and that's March third at six PM at the Fenn Center.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Chairman Taylor.
Uh, is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up at this time? Okay, Mr. Ramon?
If I could just make a comment about the lady who lived on a sailboat. My wife and I lived on a sailboat for seven years, and you meet the nicest people.
I don't know how you could be mad, living on a sailboat. Everybody's in a good mood. Mr. Louts?
Staff, I, I, again, applaud you for what you're trying to do, and I, I would encourage you to seek out the negative sides of this, because when you answer, excuse me, the negative sides of an issue, you strengthen the positive sides of it. If you go into it, not that it negative is bad, but it reinforces the positive sides. One of the things that I would be concerned about is that you continue to let the open forum, public address, occur with each one of these applications that's going to come before you, because when you, when you have an open forum, you, you give the neighbors, the neighborhood, the, the local community a chance to address their issues. When you make a presentation to us, you, you bring to us the entire package. A lot of that could be missed, if it's left to the department to make that decision, where the, the neighbors of a request would not be benefit to that, if you understand what I'm saying. When you have an open forum, you are being very transparent to the public, and that's what we are all about. That's why this board is here, that's why it comes before us, before it goes to the County Commission. Um, I, I think that the issues that we've brought up from this panel, um, were good issues, I think there's going to be more. I, I'd encourage you to bring more stuff back to us, and let us look at it, because when we, when we have a meeting, it's open to the public. And the more the public puts into it, the easier the process will be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have one more comment?
Yes.
I guess I'll allow it.
Hi, my name is Rock Wirt. I'm from Port St. Lucie. I live at 2225 Southeast Seaman Street. And the reason I'm here is there are some developers that would like to put in a community of small tiny houses. What we're looking for is a guidance, the code requirements, how we can put a development together, where we can do that, and that's kind of what my question is. Where do I go from here?
Stand by, don't leave the county, we'll help you.
Okay. Get Cory's phone number and go from there. I mean, as far as I know, there's no regulations on size of homes in a development. I mean, you can do a tiny home.
Chair Taylor, that's correct. I was just going to reiterate that.
Yeah.
That there is nothing that prevents someone from developing and constructing a tiny home that's compliant with the Florida Building Code today.
Right.
They could go on a, on an individual lot and do that currently.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So who would I see about setting up this, putting a development together?
The three folks sitting right here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
My Taye's email's on the forum. All right, a couple of things I think I want to at least have a little more discussion on with the board. I keep going back to, you know, if we're looking at this through the lens of affordable housing and trying to increase the housing stock for, like we said, students and the elderly and looking for somewhere to live. And when I think of that, I'm thinking of people that are already living here and can't afford anywhere to rent, which is, which is the reality right now. I mean, I mean, I have several friends that are being, you know, rented out of their own apartments because they can't afford it anymore because people are coming from out of town and they'll pay it and they're only raising the rent because they can get it. And more, I mean, hard to argue with that, but, but the reality is, is we need more affordable housing options, which is why I would be in support of either the flat or reduced impact fee because I think these are people that already, they're, they're already residents here that need somewhere to live and they're already, have contributed to the impact fees of utilities and I, I would think the majority would be. So I'm, I'm definitely in support of either the flat rate of, you know, whatever we come up with, if it needs to be, you know, 250, you know, 50 bucks to the school district or, you know, whatever we want to do. But I think some sort of flat rate as opposed to, you know, the, the impact fees that we have today for a regular, single-family home. The, I also want to, I guess, get some more information about something on wheels. What, what's to stop us from allowing an RV to be an ADU as long as we hold it to all of the standards that a permanent structure would have? Setbacks, driveway, and it has to be, you know, has to have its own designated location like a, like a building would, can't put it in the driveway. I mean, I get Leslie's point about hurricanes, but I mean, these things are sitting in people's driveways or wherever they are anyway during a hurricane, they're not going anywhere. But I guess the question is, how does the state regulate living full time in, in an RV?
I don't know all the issues on that. I know there are limitations in statute that it's a six-month occupancy for RVs. I would have to research that further. I don't know if Cory or Ben have more information on that, but there is a limitation of six months. And it's, it's more of an issue of your, your RV may be parked in your driveway during a hurricane event and if by chance it gets blown off or destroyed, there's not a person in there that's going to be harmed. Once you have somebody living there, that could change the situation. And there are also flood provisions, so if you have an RV that is there for a longer period of time, you probably have to meet wind and flood provisions. So it might be a little bit more difficult than just parking the RV.
Chair Taylor, if I could address that?
Yep.
From the architectural standpoint, the RV doesn't, or even a, like a trailer, doesn't, the building itself, the, the, the structure that the person would be living in, doesn't have to meet the Florida Building Code, it has to meet the Florida State statutes. It doesn't have to meet the energy code. It's probably going to have an electrical feed based on a generator, which isn't carefully regulated as far as exhaust and is a noise nuisance to its neighbors. And then there's the question of dumping the sewage from the RV. So there are a lot of environmental concerns that come with someone living permanently in an RV that as a homeowner, you might not consider. And I'm sure the folks living in an RV park are very well aware of that because they're dealing with those issues all the time, but they're hooked up to something that they can plug into and that they're dumping their sewage into at these RV parks that wouldn't necessarily be a standard item at a home. There are safety concerns. Normally in a mobile home, we strap them down, there's a foundation, there's a way to keep them from overturning during a wind event. An RV's not going to have wind, impact windows.
So maybe I think mobile home more than, like, an RV.
Okay. And, and even then, so there are, there are parts of that mobile home that have to meet the building code, the foundation, the tie-downs, but not the structure itself and the protection to its occupants. So, you know, there's, there's some definite differences between a permanent structure and like an RV.
Right. Yeah, so I guess, I mean, everything on wheels isn't an, considered an RV. It can be a tiny home that's an actual house that just has wheels.
I think it's still considered an RV.
That's an RV?
Yes.
It would be and it wouldn't be looked at for compliance with the Florida Building Code and the county would not issue a permit for a structure like that.
Okay.
Because it's a vehicle, it's not a structure.
They're regulated by the DMV.
Right. Mr. Ramon?
If I could say too, an RV park, a mobile home park and a tiny home park are three different worlds. They are, each have their own laws and the bylaws and, and what the county would be. They're totally three different things.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Odell.
Well, I would like to at least make one final comment here, that affordable housing is a little bit different from affordable land. That's one issue. The other thing is here we're talking about an accessory unit, which means you would be sharing an electric meter, mailbox, driveway, water meter, so on. So you're actually sharing your land with another dwelling or dwelling unit, should I say. As far as having a community, I don't think it would be practical the way things are structured now. And let me add to that. If you are building an affordable, you know, a tiny home at a cost of, let's say, $50,000 and your impact fees are $23,000, you've already canceled out any financial benefits. So unless we address those other issues, at this point, you know, it really wouldn't be financially feasible.
Okay. Staff, you guys have a sense of where we're at? Is there any of the 10 questions we need to discuss a little further or?
I don't believe we need to discuss any of the questions further. We need to digest all this information and sort of, you know, coalesce everything that's here and do some more research.
Okay. All right. So if everybody's happy with where we're at, I think, I mean, I'll ask for one more if there's anyone else from the, the public that would like to speak, just because we're on a workshop. Come on up.
Hi, so my name is Maribel Schnorr. I'm a real estate agent and in the city of Fort Pierce for five years. I'm a single mom and my kids live down south, they're 20 and 15. I moved down there, down, up this way to work for a builder. So since I've now, I'm an independent agent, so for me, I, I have three houses that I own of my own and I continue to flip them. I'm buying new construction, prices of new construction are going up. My first home, I paid $225,000 back in 2019. With the changes in the market, that house is now worth 400 in Fort Pierce. So I rented it out because it's simply just too big for me. It's me by myself and I have a four-bedroom house, so rented it out. Second house I owned, bought it again for $300,000 and now it's worth 425. I just bought it in September. So we all know with the changing market, how these prices are going up and everybody who has used home or a new home are just benefiting from buying and selling, buying and selling. There's so many investors out there. So, but me being a single mom, I sleep in the smallest room in my three-bedroom, three-car garage home that I just moved into in September. I, I love the idea of a tiny house and I want a small house because it's my comfort zone and being a single mom and my kids being all the way down south, it gives me the opportunity to just work at my workspace in Fort Pierce and then still go down to, down, down south to my kids and parkland. So, so many people are reaping the benefits, but I would like to build a tiny house on land, on a one-acre property, it's my stopping ground and yet in Fort Pierce. While the, the entire Fort Pierce continues to go up in price, the whole state is going up in price. Now bringing this low-income housing, knowing there's only, what, 59,000 people in Fort Pierce? And you have Port St. Lucie, 179,000 people, but, so it's growing. There's so much land still in Fort Pierce that's left over and we're expanding and bringing, I know there's low-income housing that's opening up on Okeechobee Boulevard, right next to Home Depot there. I'm not saying that it's going to bring, keep the value just lower, where we want the city of Fort Pierce to grow. I own three homes now in Fort Pierce and it's just nice to see that it, the, that everybody is growing up with it. It's just knowing how to live your life and, you know, you're looking for low-income housing, yes, but try, I'm saying you, it'd be nice to, for everyone to benefit from it and not build a development of little houses because now that's like low-income housing again. So why would you want low-income housing in a development where we are, Fort Pierce already has low-income housing in it? We want to continue to keep the values up. And like one of you were saying is that, yes, the development of low-income, of tiny homes in a development, you're just bringing low-income housing again into the city of Fort Pierce. So it, maybe it'll be good because, so I'm looking at it two different ways, but, okay, let me get to my point. My point is I would love to buy on an acreage place where I can put a tiny house and then turn it, turn that tiny house into a guest house where if I go to sell the land again, I can have, somebody can build a giant house on it and have their mother-in-law suite because a lot of people, these young families are also bunking up with their, with their parents. Or, I'm trying to bring my parents here. Well, maybe I can have the tiny house on a land acre property and then have my parents come into the, they build a house on the land that I want to purchase. So there's a lot of things you can do if you put a tiny house on a scattered lot and still keep the value of the, of the, of the city of Fort Pierce up.
Right.
Because that's where all we're going is up and these mobile homes, those are going up too. In Boynton Beach, you have tiny house development with motorhomes on them and they're like $600,000, but it's right on the water. So it's all depending upon, tiny houses can, you know, these mobile home parks, there are expensive ones and there's low ones. So it's looking at the overall picture of what are you doing to the city to keep the values up there? So you start out with a tiny house with purpose to then put a big house on a scattered lot, a land. That's, I think that would keep the values of the whole city up.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
You as a Realtor, what do you think the size of a tiny house should be and what could it cost?
So I was, I, I spoke to a tiny house guy and I know in the, in the county of Fort Pierce, there has to be a double wide side, side-by-side trailer in order for us to get a house, a tiny house on land. So I know in Okeechobee, you have to, it has to be double wide, which is about 1,000 square feet, 900 square feet minimum? 900 square feet minimum is the requirement. So if you can make a two-story out of 900 square feet, it can't be bigger than that. So it has to be double wide.
What do you think that would cost?
What, they're $150,000 is what I talked to the, a gentleman who makes the tiny houses out of Melbourne. So he used to have a little tiny house sitting on Jenkins Road and that's how I got his number and I saw this cute little house and I'm like, perfect, because I'm an outdoor cat. I just need to be inside my, I'm hardly home and my kids are not, they're all the way down south and they're older, they're 20 and 15. I'm like, this is perfect. When I called him, he had to move his location on tiny house on Jenkins Road and move it to Melbourne because they, the county kicked him out of the neighborhood. So out of the city, they didn't want him there anymore. So it'd be nice to have tiny house in the neighborhood on a scattered lot rather than a development with the, with the purpose of then building a house on top to make it a guest house.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last one.
Hi, I'm Bethany Partlow. I actually have a question regarding like Airbnbs and transient rentals. What's the consideration with that? Is that going to be allowed or are we?
I don't think we really discussed long-term versus short-term rental as a board, did we?
I remember there being discussion about Key West and there being problems with noise with Airbnbs and transient rentals in the neighborhoods, you know, sometimes being more of a nuisance, so just wanted to bring that up as a discussion.
That's a good point. We should discuss that. My Taye, what do you think?
So it depends on what the goal is for the community. If the community's goal is to provide for affordable housing for your workforce and for your elderly and for those, you know, people starting off right after college, then if you allow vacation rentals and Airbnb and other things in those units, you're not actually providing that housing need, the housing need. You're actually making it worse because you've, you've taken that opportunity for that person and provided it to a transient rental then.
Exactly. That's the last thing I would want to see as well, so wanted to bring that up. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. So how would we, I mean, how do, how do we regulate that currently? Is it just, it has to be at least a six-month rental or how does that work?
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, due to a state preemption here in St. Lucie County, if you have a single-family home, there's no duration of stay limitation. If you're in the unincorporated St. Lucie County area, there's tourism tax, sales tax and other provisions that apply to that type of activity. As far as an accessory dwelling unit, I think that's an unwritten script that we're discussing and as part of this would be evaluated, you know, obviously with for transit rentals, overnight rentals, there's the balance, there's the folks that are visiting, they're coming to a Mets game, they want to go to the beach, they're coming into town for a sporting event, coming into town to, you know, golf, you name it, versus folks, you know, and what was an issue, I think, in the city of Fort Pierce in two, in the eighties was the predominance of rooming houses where folks, because of sheer, you know, monetary issues, were renting two, three, four, five nights at a time in a group setting. So I think there's different facets of what would be evaluated, but that our current rules do not limit the duration of stay for single-family homes, but that would be a component in evaluating for accessory dwelling units if there would be a limitation, any deed restrictions, any binding use requirements.
There's also the opportunity potentially that you provide an incentive or you get, let's say you get a tax incentive or something like that, tax abatement because you do a long-term rental. And maybe even more so if you serve a certain income population. You know, there's opportunities there, we just, this is very early, we're just developing ideas.
I like both of those ideas, to incentivize lower-income, affordable housing rentals and the encouraging the long-term. I think that makes, I think that meets both goals.
Mr. Ben, if I can ask you a question. According to the, the government laws now, say I own a home and I put a little house on my property and I rent it to somebody, that person then, I have no control over what he does with it, who he rents it out? He could send it for an Airbnb every, every night if he wanted?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Lo, Vice Chair Lo, under today's regulations, you wouldn't be able to have an accessory dwelling unit on, on a single- you would be required to affirm an affidavit that you would not rent the unit seasonally or annually. That said, depending upon the outcome of any policy changes related to ADUs, accessory dwelling units, that's where these provisions would, would come into play. Uh, but, but under today's guidelines, in the unincorporated county, the ability to place an accessory unit is not eligible, other than our guest house provisions, or in the towns, villages, and countryside.
Right. So, maybe, maybe I didn't say that. So the guy could rent it out. Say, I'm renting it to a guy, he could turn around and rent it out. He can't, or he couldn't.
So I think maybe to redirect the question, if, if you owned a home that you did not live in, and you wanted to rent it to someone?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a small house on my property.
And?
What am I gonna do with it?
You, you could build, the building code, a five-hundred-square-foot home. And for instance, if you rented it to a tenant, and they wanted to sublet a room, and you still had, as long as you remained under six unrelated individuals in the home, there's no local government regulations here that would bind you or preclude you from doing so. So for instance, I, I rent that home from you, I pick up a roommate, then, we live with, without restriction. However, if I invited six individuals from this board to come co-locate with me, at the seventh occupant, that would violate our local rules, because we're unrelated.
I can get my own bathroom.
Okay. That sounds awful. Okay.
May I tap on the dish bar?
All right.
Thank you.
If it's important.
As I'm, as I'm.
Come up to the mic.
Sitting here and watching the, the presentation, and again, just, you know, considering, you know, the terminology, and, you know, who's using tiny, tiny house, or tiny home versus ADU, and I'm looking at the, the garage apartments, and the detached, or the attached, and I'm thinking, because I'm a longtime Realtor, and I've listed, and shown, and so, sold a lot of properties with garage apartments, and guest homes, and mother-in-law apartments, and I'm wondering, well, you know, it's, gosh, seems like this is kind of already being, you know, it's all happening, and it's being regulated, um, and I'm thinking, okay, well, when, what was in the county, and what was in, you know, this municipality, or that municipality, and realizing, okay, there's different, you know, things going on, and I'm thinking back to the, the Smart Growth Conferences that we had before our civics got going down, that Doug Coward was chairing, and, and then the Urban Services Boundaries, where they discussed the, you know, the villages.
Towns, villages, countryside, yes.
Yes, um, so there's been a lot of looking into that, you know, the Smart Growth Concepts, and tradition kind of incorporated a lot into their master plan community there, where, okay, we're gonna clump things together, and then have lots, you know, more green space in between, and a lot of, there's a whole section there where every one of them has the alleys with the garage, and then there's upstairs apartments in the garage. A lot of them, some of them don't. So a lot of this is going on, and I'm, and I'm thinking, well, as far as, you know, Sarasota County, or Pinellas County, maybe we have some experience to look at right here, in some of our local municipalities, and, you know, see what they've done with some of these Smart Growth Concepts, in, you know, incorporating it into what they're allowing, and what they're not allowing, and how they're.
Right.
Kind of go about having smarter communities, and, you know, and what the county may be able to do, looking at that.
Yeah.
Going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. If, staff, you're, feel satisfied, and you've got a lot of stuff to think about?
Definitely do. We want to thank you all for providing your input, and everybody that came out to the public workshop, thank you all, it's greatly appreciated.
And special thank you to Leslie for volunteering your time. Thank you for being here.
Oh, no.
All right, um, with that, there's, sorry?
Do this again, I like that.
Yeah, what's, what's the next step? Do we want to?
So we're gonna evaluate it. We're gonna try to piece together information, we're trying to research items, we will try to come up with a draft. It'll likely go to an informal meeting, and then it would come back to you. We don't know the date of that yet, because it'll take time to do this work.
Okay, yeah.
Have we any, have we had any input from the county commissioners yet?
No.
It'd be nice to hear from them ahead, when it comes back to us also.
Yes, it would go to an informal.
Yeah, it's an informal meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that concludes this evening, this evening's agenda. There's no other items for discussion, we'll.
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.